You're right. You did.
Four timer.
All right, you guys ready?
Yes, ma'am.
It is 10 o'clock on Tuesday, March 21st. We will call the City Council Workshop to order. And interesting that we're talking about water and such things today when we actually have a little bit of something coming down from the sky. So, any public comments, shall they?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Let's get right to it. Drought conditions.
Mayor and Council, appreciate the opportunity to meet with you all today. We do have a number of topics to cover with you today. Really focused mostly around water and water fund. But certainly, that is very much tied in with the environmental conditions that present themselves. And so, we've got the opportunity for Mr. Stuart Barron to present just a little bit of update on a cloudy day, but one that we are still very much below our normal averages for rain for the year. And so, I wanted to talk about drought conditions and our water conservation policies. And then, that will lead into some discussion also about just general water fund and some of our forecasting. So, I kind of brought it all together to you on one day.
Very good.
No further ado, Mr. Barron.
All right. Good morning, Mayor and Council. How are you all today?
Well.
Ready for this? We got a lot of detail, so if I don't get in enough detail, let me know and we will get into a lot more.
I'll let you know.
He said, try to keep it under an hour, so we'll see what we can do. But today, and let me introduce Scott. We have some utility staff here, Scott and David, we're in here, and also Keith. He's going to be helping us at the water plant soon. He wanted to hear about a little bit more of the higher level stuff and what we use all the data that they give us. And so, we said, well, come on up and take a look. And this is, so those are some of the guys who are actually filling out the charts and that you'll be seeing today. So, welcome, fellas. First of all, let me tell you, give you a little bit of what we're going to talk about today and why we're going to talk about it. If you'll look around the community, Kerrville, and specifically, we're in stage one, water restrictions. Our groundwater district's in stage three. I think City of Fredericksburg is looking at going and taking up, going into stage four, and Bernie's in stage one. And why are all those so different? What are the, what's everybody's triggers? I'm not going to talk about the other entities as much as I, nearly as much as I will about what we are, but there's a lot of people out in the public talking about, why is Kerrville only in stage one? And what have y'all done that makes y'all so special on the groundwater districts in three, and Fredericksburg's in four, and that, and so on? So, that's a little bit of what we're going to focus on is the drought conditions, where we're currently at. You can see by the map here, Kerrville is still, this is from February, end of February. They don't update this every day, but we're still in an extreme or exceptional drought. That's the highest one. It doesn't get any worse than that. And you can see Kerrville, actually Kerrville proper is in that. So, luckily, we've had a little rain since then, so I don't think we've come out of it yet, but I think we're still going to be in there. But I'll give you a little bit of forecasting on what that's going to look like over the coming years. We will talk about drought, our triggers, what the City of Kerrville's triggers are and how we evaluate that, all the way from our water supply to also our demand. And they'll also talk a little bit about some of the things that we've done in the last five or 10 years to kind of build up City of Kerrville's water supply and why we're in the place that we're at. So, with that, we will get started.
I want to ask a question, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Very simple question. What is the definition of drought? Because see, west of us, we're the desert, they seem to be less in a drought than we are. Is it just their average rainfall is not lower than normal, or why?
It goes on averages, and we'll talk about that on this next slide.
Thank you. The word drought, I want to make sure we understood what it meant.
So, as you go across the state of Texas, obviously, in the west, their rainfall totals are a lot less than in the east, and it's a percentage of how much rainfall you've gotten against your average.
Got you. Thank you.
So, what does that look like for the next? You'll see here, this is from the USDA guidance here on drought conditions. They are the ones that produce the front map as well. This is the next few maps will be from them. And this is valid for March through May 31st. The different colors is how they do it, and they do this on a percentage of normal. Is it going to be a normal year? It's going to be a dry year? Is it going to be a wet year? So, is it above normal, below normal, or average? You can see here that the drought they're going to show is going to persist for us for this time period, March through May. So, we are going to stay in a drought, may hopefully not as severe as we are right now, but we will still, they're predicting us staying in a drought. Make sure I move the right direction here. So, you can see through the rainfall patterns across the United States. You can see the above and below. Up there, the green is shown as above. Obviously, the brown is below. And Texas has proposed to get back to a normal rainfall pattern. This here is, this is for March, April, and May, 2022. Y'all can't see my pointer up there, can you? Let me change this. So, right here is the dates that this graph is for. As we move forward, we've got June, July, and August. Texas is all going to be about normal. So, we're going to be back into a normal pattern. Let me remind you, that doesn't say that we're going to get out of the drought. We are about 15 inches behind normal for last year still. This is just saying we're going to see normal rainfall patterns. So, it's not necessarily going to pull us out of the drought anytime real soon. Okay? We move forward to September, October, and November, equal chances. Or it means we're probably going to be about in a normal rainfall pattern along with the rest of the United States. It takes all the way to January, February of 2023 to 2024 before we might see, and that's a long ways out, that's really looking through a crystal ball, that we actually may see a little bit above normal rainfall patterns. So, that talks a little bit about the drought, where we are now, and what they're proposing for the next year. Mayor, did you have a question? Okay. So, let's talk about the river. How does that affect the river? You can see here, this is, this chart here is actually from the Upper Guadalupe River Authority. The top line up there, the blue line, is the average rainfall, or the average, excuse me, river flow from 1986 to 2021. And then, the brown line there is 2022. So, you can see, this is again, where the city gets about 85% of its waters out of the river, and you can see that the river flow is significantly less than average. Currently, it is, it's on trend with this, we're less than average for this year as well. So, another map from UGRA, they've looked back since the 1930s and said, okay, over those years, what were the exceptional dry years and exceptional wet years? And how did they stack up with one another? You can see, since 2008, we haven't had an exceptional wet year. And that's why this drought is hurting us so bad. There hasn't been a break or have an exceptional wet year. We've had some normal years in there. You'll see that not all the years are identified there across the bottom. But we are in a, in a series of dry years that have gone on now for 15 years, just about. So, we're really depleting some of the water that's in the area. This is a graph from Headwaters. This is the chart that they use to predict their, or to go into their drought stages, something they use to monitor. These are well levels across the bottom. This is the elevation above sea level for these wells. These are the dates. And then, so for February, you can see February here on the end, we're at 1404. And we go back to February here. This time last year, we're at 1422. So, that's groundwater level, and that's what it's been doing for this past year. So, you can see it is going down a little bit. These are the triggers up here that stage, tell the Headwaters what stage they need to be in from the groundwater levels. They also use some other indicators as well, but the groundwater level is actually one of their big triggers they use. Currently, they're in this stage three severe drought. Even though the aquifer's up just a touch, they haven't gone back into stage two because it hasn't recovered a lot from the summer.
So, this is the charge for the average for all four of the wells?
This will tell you, this is your average for four wells, yes.
Okay, so I assume then they also have the levels for each individual well to put this data together, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
They have a chart that probably does 20 to 30 wells across the county.
Okay.
These are the ones that they use, that they figure are the best indicators as an average.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. So, those are the outside entities. And now, we'll talk a little bit about more inside baseball here. This is a graph that we actually use to help us determine what our, what the City of Kerrville water supply is. Okay, so on the very far left-hand side, you can see the water source, the waste, this stands for Surface Water Treatment Plant. This is our first plant. This is the Xenon plant, or their secondary plant. Those two combined, if it's 100, this is, let me just go through the top, and I'll work through the top, and then we'll go down the left-hand side. There's a lot to understand here. So, the mechanical capability of the plants, or any of the components, is shown at 100%. So, if that pump, if it's a single pump, like some of these are just wells, and it's a pump, when it was new, this is what this pump could produce. That's the mechanical capability, or the plant itself is licensed at that much. That's what that component can use for the city. It's not always available. If the water master cuts us back, or we see a diminishing supply of groundwater, that pump may be capable of pumping more, or that the regulations have limited it. And so, we move over here to what's actually available to us. And this is the chart here, or the data line, that shows what we can actually use that plant for, or that well, or what it's capable of producing. So, right now, 100% available water, that's available to us. It's not just the mechanical capability, but what's been allowed to us is in this column. And you can see, we'll skip down here to ASR, ASR2. So, on a, on a good year where there's plenty of water, it'll produce 1.008 million gallons a day. This year, it will produce half a million, 576,000 gallons a day. Some of that is because of the water tables coming down some. Some of it may be the pump is a little bit worn. These are actual flows. I mean, this is what it can do right now. So, we know that we can't run the system at 100%. We don't want to run any of those components at 100% because they will wear out very fast, and they may potentially cause problems for us. So, we've taken that, and this is by ordinance, it's not by staff, they said, okay, we think that 75% is a safe number. So, we consider 75% of our full capability to be our safe operating capacity. And so, we've taken all of those numbers from what our water treatment plants will do and what our wells will do, and we say, okay, we're only counting for 75% of that. In case a well goes down, it doesn't jump from stage to stage or have a yo-yo effect. It gives us a little bit of a buffer in there to be able to accommodate for different demands and different changes in our supply. Did that, everybody? Yep? Good with that? Okay. So, 75% of our 100, or the 100% is our safe operating capacity. So, now, let's talk about demand. So, what does demand look like? This is a chart that is actually filled in daily by our operators out on the field. We'll go through this as well from across the top here. This first part is the treated surface water, so that's how much water is included, it also includes ASR1, how much of this water we're sending into distribution from our treated surface water. Well water is the next one. So, let me toggle back to the next slide. So, all of these well waters from basically this darker blue down here is all considered well water. These lighter two are ASR water, and then the very light is the surface water. So, we look, that's the way the following slide works.
So, you had surface, ASR, and then well?
Yes.
In that order? Okay, thank you.
And then, you also have ASR1 and ASR2, so we can keep track of those two, how much we've pumped out of those two as well. And you can see the totals across the bottom, and then the average of what we've been using daily. So, there's our, how much we can pump. This is, then the next part is the total to distribution. This first green column here, that's how much the city's been using on average every day. The average is at the bottom. It's a daily number, but that's how much our city uses.
When we say city, we mean community, right? So, that's the demand that the community is requesting us produce every day.
Every day in February.
It's a common, yeah.
Every day in February.
Right. So, you can see across the bottom here, on February, we'll see an averaged February for the last five years, as consumption's about 2.8 million gallons. We're at 3.1, pretty close. We've been growing a little bit, you know, the more, more recent numbers are, should be just a little bit higher than the average over the last five years. So, we're, they're pretty much on chart. And then, this number is our safe operating capacity, so you'll be able to see where we're at on that particular day, what our safe operating capacity, what percentage of safe operating capacity we're running at. So, on this particular day, on February 1st, we ran at 44% of our safe operating capacity. The trigger is in this next column. It's the seven-day running average, and this is what the ordinance points to, to say, this is when we're going from one stage to the next. When this seven-day running average gets to 65%, you go into stage one. And when it gets to 75%, you go into stage two, and so on up the chart. And I'll have more graphs about that later. But that is the seven-day running average. So, right now, we're at about 72, or excuse me, 42% of that safe operating capacity. So, by this chart, or by these days, we are, this does not dictate us to go into stage one. However, we didn't come out of stage one. We thought it was pertinent to stay in that and let everybody know we are still in a drought. We are concerned about the future. We are, we know that the drought is probably going to persist this year, and so, let's just stay in stage one and continue that forward. And that's part of the discussion that we're having today, is, you know, do we want to look at those triggers? Is there something that council wants us to go back and look at that trigger and see if that's important, that we change that, or if y'all like the way we're doing it now and want us to continue?
A couple of quick comments about the seven-day running average. The reason we do that, on any given day, you might have a spike in demand for some reason. Maybe we have a big event, we've got a lot of folks in town, or maybe there's a, it's a weekend, Memorial Day weekend, and a lot of tourism, right? Or perhaps, we have a piece of equipment that goes down for one day or two days, and so reduces the supply side of it. And so, either one of those could have an effect on the safe operating capacity percentage utilized. And so, that's why we use that seven-day running average to kind of smooth that out, so you wouldn't run into a trigger just on a one-day basis and then come right back out of it. It gives us a little bit of time to see where trends are happening on a, basically, a weekly basis, and also be able to give staff and the community, if we see that we're approaching a trigger, it gives us some time to let the public know, as well as let our staff know, and kind of gear up for whatever that next stage may be. Does that make sense?
Since the river flow is so important to us, you can see it as well on here, it's something they document every day. It's averaging about 28 CFS. Down here at the bottom, at 65 is the mean, and so, we're less than half of what the river normally flows at.
CFS, what is that?
Cubic feet per second. Okay? And we have our precipitation, so you can see February, how much rain we've got. We got almost an inch of rain in February. Lake level, that's the lake behind Chili's there, or Nimitz Lake, where our water treatment plant is, so we monitor that. It's overtopping right now, and so, you'll see it's very consistent. Some of that's just wave action that you're seeing, those few tenths of an inch, or a few tenths of a foot, actually, just from the waves. And then, we also do monitor our, some of our groundwater levels as well.
So, it's a good time just to remind council that we have various water permits, surface level water permits. One of those is the run of the river. So, river is flowing, we have the ability to withdraw water from that flowing river and process that water, turn it into drinking water. We also have water rights related to Nimitz Lake, because there is some natural storage ability within that lake. And so, we have the ability, even when there is not necessarily a flow of the river, to be able to draw water from that lake that we've stored and process that water, either put it into ASR or put it into the potable drinking water supply. So, it is kind of two different, there's a great benefit in Kerrville having that natural storage within the lake.
And isn't there only a certain percentage we're allowed to take from that?
There's certain specific gallonage rights for both the lake as well as the run of the river.
Good. Got any more questions about surface water? There's a whole lot more that we can get into if y'all want to talk more about surface water and all those quantities, but...
Can you help me decipher some of these abbreviations? What does MG stand for?
Million gallons?
And you told us CFS, and then MSO?
Mean sea level?
Thank you. I just want to make sure I got the right ones here.
Sure. We like our acronyms.
YYT, yes you do.
Okay, so these are the drought, these are our drought stages, stages one through five. Currently, you can see where highlighted is in stage one. With that, we've noticed over the years that a big portion of the demand on our system is irrigation. So, stages one and stages two basically just change how much you can irrigate. There's a few other small criteria there, which we'll talk a little bit about later. But from the year around to stage one and stage two, that's mainly just adjusting how often people can irrigate. And then, stage three, it does, this, this piece of this, or this slide here, mainly just talks about irrigation. We'll talk a little bit more about the stages, and you actually have a hard copy in front of you, are all five stages, what they can do in each one of those five stages.
This is the graph that's publicized from top to bottom.
Yes, sir. Because it's the most common. We haven't, we don't get, we don't want to get too high in our drought stages. And so, mainly, stages one, our year-round water conservation stage one and two are the things that the people are most common to. And since it's most related to irrigation, we've decided that this is a good sticker for people to have, so they can see what's happening in those different stages, because it's mainly what they're going to see. So, let's look across the top here. The first stage, our safe operating capacity, when it hits 65% over seven-day average, we go into stage one. And stage two is 75% of the safe operating capacity. And then, stage three is 85, stage four is 95, and then, stage five is 100%. So, again, safe operating capacity is 75% of our 100% capability. So, there is a little bit of, some room there for what Mr. Hoppy said, if a well goes down or a component acts up that we can't, that we're not leapfrogging stages as well. But those are the components. And so, as you look at this and you see how diverse the City of Kerrville system is, and then you think back to Bernie and Fredericksburg and Headwaters and all of those other ones, and when the people ask you, why is Kerrville doing what Kerrville does? It's because our system is different. The way that we operate it is consistent with the way that we think it's the best way to operate. But if y'all are interested in us looking at those stages and changing that up to be further in a drought stage right now, you know, there's impacts there, too. You know, people watch, if you look out at Lake Mead in the far west, you know, there's nothing make you feel like moving out there. There's almost no water left in the far west. So, that's something you got to be concerned about as well as, you know, what's the, what's the right, what's environmentally right, what's everybody, you know, what's going What's environmentally right? What's everybody, you know, what's gonna be attractive to people? And also what's gonna raise the concern level, so.
Stuart's right. Just to reemphasize that point, Kerrville has invested in your water supply for decades. Uh, it's one of the first communities to develop the ASR system. Uh, you've made major investments in the reuse system, which has helped reduce potable demand. Uh, you diversified by adding more wells to your system. All those things have helped the community not have to go into further drought stages, right? So, uh, when you had Fredericksburg and Bernie and, and even the folks out in the county, they're very limited in their water supply. They're not diversified. Uh, they may only have one, maybe two sources. And so it's much more volatile for them than it is for Kerrville, because you as a community have invested in it.
Well, we only take a certain, like seventy-five percent of, of our safe operating capacity. We're not actually taking as much as we have a legal right to take. Is that correct?
That's correct. Now, uh, usually not as much as you have a legal right to take, nor maxing out the mechanical capability of the system. That's correct. There's, there's a natural cushion.
There's a little cushion even there unless the water master comes through with risk dire restrictions.
Absolutely.
So does, when you look at the, the allowed watering times, you save an hour in the morning with stage two and you save two hours in the after, or in, uh, yes, in the evening. Does that make, does three hours really make that much difference?
Yes. Couple of other features. There's a next slide. It's, it's great segue, Mayor. Uh, there's a couple of other features that are beyond that. That's mostly on the residential side. There's a, a few other restrictions that are added in from the, uh, kinda more commercial and construction side that do make some differences, and Stuart can elaborate on those.
But irrigation counts for a lot. So when you see, uh, our normal demand in the winter time is around three point three, three point five, anywhere from three to three point five, we'll say. In the summer, it jumps up to five. That's irrigation.
Irrigation.
So that's, that's the main difference in those times, right? Now, there's some other things that you'll see on this slide that there may be slightly more construction in the summertime. There may be people out power washing their sidewalks, but that's not, that doesn't move the needle that much. It's mainly irrigation. So, and as just what you were doing, Mayor, these are the, these are the comparisons of, of stage one and stage two. Outside of the irrigation time, well, you'll see the irrigation time up, up, up on the top part. Uh, but in stage one, or I'm starting at the top of the slide, I guess. Uh, water restrictions for both, um, operation of water fountains, um, fountains or features, fountains, ponds, decorative water features that do not supply, support aquatic life, or do not use recycling systems. So in other words, if you've got a, a pond or a feature that just one time a water just runs through it and it runs out on the ground, it runs down to the river, you can't use that in stage one or stage two. If it's recycling, you can't. So the washing down of impervious cover, that's the, what I was talking about, washing sidewalks or washing buildings, things like that are most prohibited in both stages of one and two. And then there's differences between the two below. Um, as, as the mayor just went over a few minutes ago, the different times of, of irrigation. Um, the handheld hose, you know, in stage one, you could do that anytime. In stage two, that gets changed from seven PM or any, um, seven PM to nine AM. You can do it basically all evening long, if you wanna stand out there and water your flowers or your garden or whatever you have to do, but as long as you're doing it with a handheld hose. Uh, temporary fire hydrants goes from twenty-five thousand gallons a day to twenty thousand gallons a day. That's mainly for construction. Um, they also use that for dust control and things like that. We do have a lot of temporary fire hydrant meters. Um, most all are used for construction.
What happens when they, if they go over that amount? How do you know?
Well, we read their meter. We don't read them daily, but we can look at an average on their meters and say, hey, you're using more water than you're supposed to, and we can actually slide over that. Additional restrictions in stage two is the use of water for dust control. Washing down buildings are, uh, for other than fire protection or if required for construction. And the use of bulk, um, potable water for construction purposes only. So they can use the, the bulk waste, our water at our wastewater plant, but they can't use the potable water for those, those items. So the water's still available to them. We just don't want them to use our drinking water for that.
So if you have a construction site and they've got dust, the dust is just, it's gonna be there.
Yeah, we asked that question specifically. You can't use potable water. So you absolutely can purchase, uh, non-potable water to utilize for that dust control. But they one hundred percent still need to maintain their dust control requirements. Absolutely.
Not an excuse.
Just don't use potable drinking water.
It goes right back to what Mr. Hoppy was saying earlier. You know, the city's done a lot of planning. We have a, we have a reuse system that water is available to, uh, most, um, all the golf courses in town. Uh, the, the dog shelter, some of the sports fields. And so that demand, Toronto University uses it. And so that demand has kinda taken what they were using our groundwater for and using, um, potable surface water for. Now they're being able to use that reuse water, and that's lessened the demand on that, on that system, so. It's very.
That reuse water diverts at the, at the plant on the loop and goes to that large reservoir that you showed me.
Yes, sir. And then from that reservoir, it's pumped from there to ground reservoirs outside of each one of those facilities that are owned and maintained by that, by the facility.
That one you can see on the town side of Holesworth Drive as a, a reserve, a reservoir for that.
Yes, sir, mm-hmm.
But if you had a construction site and they needed water for dust, do you, do we sell it to them? Do we give it to them?
We sell it to them.
We sell it to them.
It's by the truckload, and it's depending upon the size of the truck. And it's actually cheaper than potable water. Now, the contractor will argue, well, I have to drive up there and get it. I gotta pay a guy, gotta pay a truck.
Oh, well.
That's the cost of doing business, so.
Where do they get it? Just, I had curiosity. Where do they go? Where do they take the truck? To the big reservoir or?
Yeah, um, at the wastewater plant itself.
Just spigot there sometime.
Yeah, and there's a big tank in the back there that we actually have pumps, and they just drive under them. And we, it takes a few minutes to fill a truck.
Oh.
But it, it's, it's available water.
Does, does that happen too much? Very much?
Yeah.
That we've got, that they're, that they're actually buying water from us to use?
Yes, ma'am. Even when we're not in drought stages, cause it's, it's cheap. If they have a truck in there in the neighborhood, then they'll, they'll buy the water in the water master. That's one of the first things she'll cut off is, uh, is pumping out of the river for construction projects. So she wants it in the river.
What did they use to do before we had the reuse ponds?
Um, so we were, we able, most trucks are small. They hold maybe two thousand gallons on the regular bobtail truck, eight thousand gallons. Our, our plant ran enough that we could, we always had that much water. I mean, it's just a small amount of water. Just can't, just can't carry that much in a truck. So I wanna put a couple of slides in here, um, just so you'll see the comparison from what is shown on this slide is written out here, so you can see what stage two is. These are also in your, in your handouts there, all the different stages. I just wanted to let y'all see as it's written in the ordinances. And so, um, you can actually see there what, what it's actually says on the ordinance itself. With that, we, so what, what do we do? It's one of the few businesses maybe other than K-Pub where we tell you, we really don't want you to use our service. Uh, we know that you have to, but we wanna give you all the opportunity we can to save as much water as you can. And so, uh, over the past few years, we've done a few different, um, strid- strategies to help people reluse, reduce their demand on our water system. And these are some of those components from sprinkler gauges. They're small little gauges that you put in the ground. The little short ones that you see, I've often wondered when I looked at that, what are those for? That's actually for a sprinkler. It's not a big rainwater gauge. It only catches about an inch. Which typically, uh, my argument here is this hill country doesn't usually get more than half an inch of rain at a time. And so that's probably what you ought to be watering, if you're watering native type, um, plants. So anyway, we, we offer those. We offer, um, toilet leak detection tablets, which you drop in your toilet. It's basically a blue tablet. It dyes the water blue. And if you see blue water, um, coming through the, your, inside the bowl of your toilet, you know you have a leak where the water's kinda actually flowing through from the, from the reservoir on the top to the, to the bowl itself, so. Uh, a few years ago, uh, fiscal year eighteen and nineteen, we actually had a toilet replacement program. In nineteen ninety-four, they quit making high-flow toilets. And so we allowed people, I think Scott, so we did about a hundred of them. We replaced a hundred old flow, old high-flow toilets with new low-flow toilets to allow people to, uh, reduce their demand on our water system. You can't even buy the old toilets anymore, and so that program's kinda obsolete. And, you know, they're kinda replacing themselves as they need to anyhow. Um, so we haven't seen much demand for that. Uh, there's brochures up front, uh, for zero escaping and rainwater harvesting. Um, actually, you'll see down further that the parks actually has done that. Um, in Hayes, Hayes Park, where we have rainwater tanks out there, and there's zero escaping around them. You also see a little bit of zero escaping out here by the walkway when you're going up the elevator. Uh, so we're, we're following our own desire to be water-conscious. Uh, real-time meter detection, so we'll be able, our meters show when there's a leak. It will flag our, our office up front, and they will send out leak letters.
I have a question about that. Um, I was listening to the lead this morning, and there was, uh, a, um, an area where, I guess a leak was not detected, and they got a pretty exorbitant bill. Do we have a way of getting messages to those people, uh, before billing time?
Julie answered that. She handles all of those.
Okay.
That, that's yes and no. Uh, so implementation of the new AMI system has really helped us in that, because it, uh, shows us our top ten water users every day. And it also shows, shows unusual use where it's implemented. So remember, we're still working through that implementation process. We're in the last phase right now.
That's gonna be my question.
Yeah, so those that are online, it's easier to see. Kinda the caveat to that is if their heavy users are ready, um, what's the variance? And so where's the trigger, um, for us to know that that's different? Um, so that goes back to our conversations about, um, why AMI is so important? Because if we don't see it until the guys go out to read the meter, um, that's when they detect it. Now, if they do go out and read a meter and they see, this is way higher flow than this person usually has, they'll knock on the door first. Um, if they don't get them, they'll do a door tag, and then they'll let the girls know in the office, we need to try to get ahold of that person. If it's excessive, they'll go ahead and shut the water off right then. So we do have some steps in place even without AMI to do that, but remember, we're a month behind on billing. So most places, we are online, and if that's working correctly, then we are catching a lot more. So just looking at simply leak adjustments, we're down substantially compared to this time last year, just because of the technology we have now. So yes and no is the answer right now.
Okay.
Um, hopefully in the future, we'll have some sort of portal that customers can be able to track their water use on their own. Um, once we have that in place, then they'll have another tool to use.
So those that are not set up with the AMI system yet.
Right. They're just kind of. Month-to-month reads, just like we were before. And that's what makes it difficult.
I'm sorry? The east side of town.
Yeah, east side, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Right. But it's really working well. The ones that we have are really working well. And I would say we're at about sixty-five to seventy percent, um, reads coming in through AMI right now. So we've seen.
And how, how much longer do you predict to?
Supply issues a little bit right now. Um, so we haven't received our collectors for phase three. They've been on order since October one. Um, so we're waiting on those collectors. We have, uh, most of the infrastructure completed, so all the antennas and things have been, uh, built out, and everything's ready to connect. But, um, we're waiting on the, the data collectors for those reads, to collect those reads, um, to get them to the office. So soon as we have those and we can set an installation date, so hopefully soon. I just don't know on supply.
So the, um, from what I, what I understand, dealing with or talking to people, they, they have, some of them have really enjoyed it. Some of them have said, man, we don't like Big Brother watching us until they have a water leak. And they're like, oh, wow, that was really nice. We don't have this huge, and we don't waste hundreds of thousands of gallons on a broken pipe that they're not aware of. So big, big component. They're a big help for us. Uh, quick water leak detection. So a customer can come in and they can run, it's gonna run a report with Julie and see how much water they've been using, and also what the pressures will be in that area as well, so. The time, we already talked about the parks installation and the water conservation stickers and coloring books for children there in the office as well. So we do stuff to help people understand, uh, being water-wise. Uh, we also have some, uh, plants, uh, some, a, a list of plants, native plants that people should plant in this area. We highly recommend them plant them this time of year. I don't know how many people come in and they wanna plant it, plant their yard in August. And it's like, you know, you just can't put enough water on it in August to make it grow here, so. Uh, we do those educational features, but they don't listen till they've lived here a few years, and they're like, oh, yeah, August's not a good year for.
We don't have any restrictions on pools or when you can install a pool, like putting one in in the middle of the summer?
No, ma'am. No. I mean, a pool will hold twenty thousand gallons of water or so, and so it's not a, it's a one-time fill. The filling of the pools in, in some of those later stages, we do request, um, that they put devices over the top of their pools. If it's floating pool chairs and stuff like that to keep the evaporation down, um, but not the installation, I don't know.
In the park, Louise Hayes, we, uh, UGRA put in the, the big water catchment. What is that used for exactly? I mean, it's kinda sits up on the hill, and what does it water?
I will have to get Ashley to answer that question. I don't know exactly what components they're watering it with, but I know they use it for irrigation water. I don't know where, where within the park they're doing it, but yes, ma'am.
For landscaping that was installed, uh, really in that buffer area, uh, between that, uh, uh, large pavilion and some of the residential behind that, uh, predominantly, uh, as well as some other, uh, landscaping that's been planned around that area. Um, the city installed that, uh, via a, a grant partnership. Uh, UGRA provided about a quarter of the funding for that.
And with that, I'll, I'll sum it up and, um, bring back the, the point, or the question of the day, or the, uh, the question is, you know, does council, and don't need an answer, but that's kinda the, you know, do we feel comfortable with what the city's doing and the drought stages that we have in comparison to other ones? Um, last year, we did get a bunch of calls of people saying, hey, you know, why are we? And you try to explain this to them over a telephone conversation, uh, it gets over. Uh, it doesn't, it doesn't, it's hard to explain over the phone. And they just get frustrated, and they're like, okay, I'll just call my councilperson. And we don't want that. We, we want to tell them and explain it to them, and we do our best. Uh, but there's a lot of times that they're, they're just not willing, especially if they live out in the county, and they just don't understand how much infrastructure the city's built. And all of the money that we spent to get today to where we are today, to where we don't have to ratchet through those, um, drought stages as quick as what they would out in the county with just a well.
Well, and if I recall correctly, um, there was a natural conservation going on, just people being cognizant of, um, wind water and that sort of thing, which has helped us be able to not get into those more extreme stages. And I think it's just the fact that, that there's that, that consciousness there that keeps us in a better position, you know? We're just, we're just more conscious about the water that we're using, so.
Yeah, I think there were a number of things, really, from when we saw the twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen drought.
Yeah.
The demand that we're seeing now versus the demand then is drastically different, and actually lower. Uh, which is counterintuitive, cause we have had growth. It's been slow growth since then, but we have had growth. And so that demand has been less, both, I think, from a increase in conservation-mindedness, uh, of, of our community, as well as, uh, intentional demand reduction for potable water. That, again, the community's invested in the reuse system that has helped us reduce that potable water daily demand.
Yeah, and if you have a, if you're questioning whether or not we should change any of this, I, I don't think we need to fix what isn't broken. I mean, let's do what's been working for us as a city. I would ask the question, if we went to stage two, just say we, looking at the future, rain is not, uh, in, really in the, in, uh, on the forefront. If, what would be a negative of going to stage two at, at this time? Or we say the first of May or something like that, that we said, okay, we're going to go through the summer at stage two, just to be on the very, very conservative side. What would be the negatives?
So at, at attempt of humor, Julie will tell you about budgeting this next part of this conversation. So we need to sell the water, right? I mean, so, uh, we do forecast how much water we think we're going to sell. Um, and, and those drought stages, they do, they have an effect on it, like, like we intend to. Um, and so that would be the, and, and my, I don't think of any other reason. I mean, I think it, it sends.
Just be financial, really.
It's a financial, uh, concern as to how much, you know, we're, how much we think we're going to make off of our revenues next year. Sends a good message out there to the other, to the, to the people that are in the higher stages. Um, but this kinda proves up to you that the, the infrastructure that we built over the last few years, we feel like we're in a pretty good, um, pretty good position. The well chart that, that I showed y'all earlier, I will tell you, let's see if I can get to. So since, um, since this chart, this is our safe operating capacity right now, the seven point two-three, uh, six. The wells have diminished a little bit more. It's about two hundred thousand gallons a day less than what they are. It's actually closer to three hundred thousand gallons a day less. Uh, but it's not, it's, right now, we're looking at the, we're looking at demand. We still have, we're mainly on surface water. Uh, we're starting to see a little bit of rain. We think we're going to get back into kind of a normal rainfall pattern. And so, uh, right now, we're not really, um, we, we monitor that probably every week or every two weeks. The, the water guys go out and test the wells and see how much they're producing. We kinda see where they're moving at. And they always fluctuate a little bit, so don't, don't be too concerned, but, uh, that's where we're at right now, so.
You said, you said we're, we're mostly on surface water right now?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, you can see from, this is actually, uh, real world. This is last month, so our groundwater wells right here.
Mm-hmm.
That's, well, that's ASR, so. ASR well.
That one right there?
Yeah.
And that's just cause we don't, there's not enough source coming from those wells, water supply?
We have enough water in the river right now that we're able to pump mainly river water.
Okay, that's, okay. So it's not that we don't have the water supply. It's just that we have enough with our surface water supply that we're just pulling from there.
So our use mainly is we'd like to use a hundred percent surface water, um, as, or first, is our first, um, source of water. Um, and then groundwater, and then ASR water. And it kinda flip-flops between groundwater and ASR water, cause we just can't pull enough ASR water out of the ground, cause we just have the two wells. Uh, you can only put it in about as fast as you can get it out. So you can't meet the total demand with those two wells, so you kinda mix the two, groundwater and ASR water.
It was my understanding that previously we did eighty percent from surface water, and then twenty percent from the Trinity well, I believe. Is that still the case?
Yeah, that's kind of a yearly average is why we use that, cause in the summertime, we will run the wells more. Um, but you'll see in February, since the water in the river's a little bit more, we may be running almost strictly on river water.
Sure. And can you go back to the slide that you had before on the water supply? I wanna ask two questions. You had an asterisk on a couple of the wells. There's Loop five thirty-four, Meadowview, H Street, and Hayes Park. Can you help me first identify the, the top two, Loop five thirty-four and Meadowview? Is five thirty-four the Ellenberger?
Yes, it's the one behind the VA hospital.
Right. And then the Meadow, sorry. And then Meadowview?
Meadowview is, um, right next to the public safety complex that we're building, or the public safety facility on Meadowview Drive.
Right, okay. And then the, what do we call the one at H Street and Hayes Park?
H Street is just the H Street well.
Okay, we don't have a special name for that one, okay.
Um, and it is on eight, the end of H Street. And the reason you see that it has no, it, it's actually in maintenance right now. We're putting a new liner in it and a new well, or a new, new pump, excuse me.
And then the Hayes Park, is that what we call that well too?
Yes, sir. It's in the corner of Hayes Park.
Okay. So then going to my question now, when we look at the, um, top two, Loop thirty-four and Meadowview, there's two asterisks next to it. I'm a little bit confused about what this means. Look at the bottom right. It says the wells cannot both run at the same time without entering the same cone of depression. Now, after doing some research, I think I understand what that means, but can you help me just clarify?
So we've run both of those two wells at the same time, and typically, we don't have any problem with them. Now, as, as that's starting to come down, as the water levels are coming down, the cone of depression is basically, uh, you've seen a vortex out in, out in a river or in a lake or something, and that kinda pulls down. The groundwater's gonna do that as well. As soon as you turn that well on, it wants to run towards the well. And so it's like in a, like a funnel shape. Well, as that funnel starts to overlap, those wells can influence one another, and one of them will start sucking air. Last year, we had a, at the ASR, uh, or excuse me, the Loop five thirty-four well, um, it started sucking air. We don't know if it's exactly, it only did it the once that we were there. You could hear it, it kinda, it sounds like it's sipping air. But we don't know if the VA well was running at the same time. We know Meadowview was running at the same time. And so, well, we said, well, in order for us to not have a conflict in those two wells, let's log it on here that we, to our knowledge, while they're both running, there is some kinda interaction going here. Same thing with H Street and, and Hayes Park, just they're close to each other. So H Street is by, um, Autoza, or, um, Auto, Autoquest, is that right? Autoquest, um, there on the end of, behind Mini, Carquest, that's.
Carquest, there you go.
Um, Carquest, and then the Hayes Park is, uh, right here on Loop, um, on the, right next to Highway sixteen and Thompson Drive. So when those two run, they affect each other. So what we've tried to do when we're fixing the H Street wells, we're gonna actually put a little smaller pump in it, so hopefully it doesn't pump as fast, or it won't, it won't pump as fast, and hopefully it won't affect one of the, the other well, so we can run them both at the same time.
And which one? Sorry, did you say we're gonna do that too?
H Street, the one we're working on right now, yes, sir.
Okay, so that one's gonna, okay, so, cause, um, I guess if I understand it right, the greater the pressure from the well, the more water supply that will pool. And if there are two wells close together, and that cone of depression is caused by one of the wells that has the, the greater, um, gosh, the greater pool of water, the other one will then kinda go dry, or it'll, it'll lower, right? And that's why we're not pulling anything from it. So when, what, what through the exploration of the Ellenberger well, then, did we find a new source of water? Or, cause we're pooling, sounds like we're pooling from a source that we already had. And now we can't run both of them at the same time because we're pooling.
We do run them both at the same time. Um, we just, we wanna, we not, we wrote it on here so we would vote, so we would remember during these drier times, cause this doesn't happen all the time. We're, we're in exceptional drought right now, and so we need to kinda refresh our memory. The last time was in eleven, in two thousand and eleven. So some of this data that's left on here is from previous years, and we, cause we, we need to know. Y'all say, hey, Stuart, we don't wanna run out of water. Do work your magic. So this is, this is how we make the magic of how, what's history look like to us. And so that's why those are on this sheet the way they are. To ask, answer your question about the cone of depression, it's, it's commonly known through the groundwater district, and it's within their rules that says if you're gonna, if you're gonna produce, or if you're gonna drill a well and you anticipate it to produce this many gallons of, of water, you have to be that many feet away from your property line. Cause they know that cone of depression's gonna happen, and they don't want it to affect your, the, the adjoining property. That's out in the county. Our wells are a whole lot bigger. They're further apart, but we still have that cone of depression. It's just the normal flow of, um, of how's the water moves through the aquifer. And as Julie's talking, and I'll run upstairs, and I'll get a, pick, I'll get an actual core of our aquifer, so y'all can see it. It's not just a, it's not a rock that water easily flows through it. In fact, it does, but when we look at it, we're like, man, that looks like a stone. And so it'll be actually, it'll be good for y'all to, to see how that, how the aquifer actually looks.
I guess I'm just trying to narrow down the fact that whether, when we got this new Ellenberger well, we actually got a new source of water, or if we're pooling from the same source that we already had.
So the, the reality is, does those aquifers influence each other, right? Uh, and so what you added was capacity to your system, that's right. So it's, it's not necessarily, it is new supply, but it's new supply from a capacity standpoint. Um, it's very complex on a day-to-day basis on what that capacity is, based off of a lot of different influences and a lot of different variables. And so we give you this information to kinda let you know a little bit of what staff's evaluating for you from a professional standpoint every day, on a daily basis, and kinda trying to match up basically that demand, as well as the buffer that you've asked us to. as well as the buffer that you've asked us to, to provide within a certain level of capacity. Um, and so to kind of zoom out, Stuart, if you could kind of bump forward, uh, one to that water conservation stage. I think the biggest thing that we wanted to help kind of explain with this level of detail for you guys today was bump forward one more to the stages.
Okay.
The, what council really set a number of years ago was the policy in regards to the trigger percentages related to the safe operating capacity. Because that safe operating capacity potentially could change, as you mentioned, on a day-to-day basis. Some of those pieces are more about redundancy. Some of them change with variability depending on where the aquifer level is or how hard we've run those different pumps. Uh, and so that piece is really more of the, uh, professional level of, of the mechanical capability and the operation of the system. The real policy piece for you all is telling us, okay, when we reach a certain percentage of that safe operating capacity, which may vary on a day-to-day basis, when are you wanting us to trigger into those stages? These were set, uh, almost a decade ago, right? And the system has changed since then. The demand has changed, as we mentioned before, in a positive way. Um, and the capacity has changed because of a number of features that you all have added to your system over that decade. And so the real question for today is, is, is there any desire for council to reevaluate, uh, the triggers? Are y'all comfortable with where we're at?
I appreciate the response. I feel like we transferred over to something that was different from the question that I answered. So I think you're trying to refocus us on what you're actually asking us, but I'm just trying to get an understanding about what we're actually working with here. Um, and so just, I, I want to make sure, I understand what you're asking us to look at, but before we can actually determine that, I, I also need to understand as a council member, who's going to be making a vote on this policy direction, what we're working with. So that's why I was asking those questions. So I guess to finalize, and I'll conclude with this on just the remarks about that, is that it wasn't a new source, but it was a new well that we put in place to create more capacity for supply for our customers.
So they, so the Ellenberger is a new, if you want to consider it a source, it's a new aquifer. And so we drilled through probably about eight different aquifers before we get down there. Um, we've noticed that since we've drilled that well, that a lot of our other wells, A, uh, Meadowview, let me go back to the names of them so I can name a Meadowview well, I think ASR one or an ASR two, were all finished at the top of the Ellenberger, right? It's the lower part of the Trinity. That's the aquifer that we were intending to hit. Well, they sit right on top of each other. I mean, there's no distance between them. But the Ellenberger is a no other aquifer below that. And so as you tap into that, the further you drill into that Ellenberger, the more water you get out of the Ellenberger. So to answer your question, yes, we are, uh, in a deeper into a, an aquifer that we only scratched the surface of.
Okay.
Does that?
It, it helps answer the question, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I think that, I think, I mean, you've given us a lot of information here and, uh, that, uh, it's, we need to be careful that we, we don't misconstrue things and, and, uh, just because there is so much information and, and it gets so detailed, that, uh, uh, we need, we just need to be careful that we don't, we don't, uh, give the wrong information out to, to the public and, and misconstrue, so. All right, any other questions, council?
No, thank you.
On this right now?
Do you want a policy direction from us today or just think about it and come back to y'all if we need to do anything?
Yeah, it's really just education for you guys today. So we're not looking for a specific policy direction from you all other than it, it is a very complex system. As you all have elaborated on, it's, uh, by intention, uh, because you all have been invested in a diversified, a very diversified system. Uh, and so, you know, right now, we're continuing to carry on, uh, with this policy direction. Um, you know, certainly if council has a desire to change that, um, you know, please let staff know and, and we'll be happy to bring you all more information and guide you through that, that decision.
Well, council, overall, are you comfortable where we are right now? Joe?
Brenda said it well, the, the system's not broken. The stages aren't broken. I don't see why we need to fix them. Now, when it's hot and it's in the summer and people's yards are dying, we get a lot more calls actually about it. But, uh, the, the, the difference between us and other neighbor, neighboring communities is that we have a hybrid system that draws from many different sources.
Yes, sir.
Well, and I just appreciate, uh, the attention to detail that is with us all the time. I mean, I, I mean, I know you have to do it, but, but it's just, it's a very comforting feeling to know that, uh, you do have all of these numbers and, and all of this detail and, uh, that you're on top of it all the time, so. Uh, and, uh, I feel very confident. If you have any questions, if you're concerned at all with anything, at any point, you will come to us and say, we need to reevaluate.
Yes, ma'am, no, no doubt. And if, if, if y'all have calls and y'all want them to talk to us, we're happy to do the best we can. We can explain all this. I mean, we've, I've had attorneys come sit in my office and we give them all the information. Um, and the next day in the newspaper, he's still saying what he says, so.
Well, the bottom line is we've made an investment in our infrastructure. Maybe that's why we don't have to go to stage two, three, four as early as other communities. And it's that simple.
It is, yes, ma'am.
All right.
I'll go get a piece of that aquifer and I'll set it on the edge of the diastop there. It's actually really neat to look at because you think this is, this is where we get our water from, so.
Show and tell.
Okay, thank you for all of the information.
Thank you.
Then we're going to move on to our next topic, which was also water-related. Uh, as you recall from a number of months ago, uh, we, uh, had brought to you all, really back in this fall, the conclusion of our water wastewater master plan, uh, which was really related to, um, an infrastructure assessment of both of our, uh, treatment plants, both the water treatment plant as well as the wastewater treatment plant, and then, uh, the collection and distribution infrastructure of those respectively. Uh, and so with that, uh, we identified over a hundred million dollars worth of long-term needs and they're all going to happen in the next five, ten years. Uh, but then within that, we did prioritize, uh, with our staff, uh, the, the top fifteen or so million dollars worth of needs that we assess are, are more near-term and they are within that more five-year kind of time span. Uh, and so we brought a strategy, uh, to you all, uh, to look at the potential use of, uh, revenue utility bond funding, uh, that we've initiated that process per your direction. Uh, but along with that, you all charged us with, hey, we'd like to see the long-term forecasting for where are our system expenses, both from an operational standpoint, a capital asset standpoint, and then our, our capital infrastructure, our CIP programs, uh, and where are those trajectories tied in particularly with where our, our rate trajectories are at? And so, uh, finance staff has done a great job in helping model that and, and we look forward to being able to present some of that information to you today. Julie, it's all yours.
So, uh, kind of just based on what, what EA said, I'm going, I'm going to use this. I'm not an expert on this new system yet, so I'm not going to pretend. Um, so, uh, back to, you know, you, you guys approved a resolution for us to move forward on work, uh, for some revenue bond issuance, but there were some questions regarding our comfort level, um, in paying new debt and then also forecasting, uh, particularly where rates were involved. So what I thought I would do is kind of walk you through, uh, how we forecast, um, for the water side and then it's very different from how we do general fund because a lot, a lot more variable. So I thought I'd just walk you through that process and then, um, answer questions as we go along if you have them, of course. So historically, um, we've really used water and sewer revenues to cover operations and debt. So, um, existing, no, blow, please just go ahead.
That is cool.
It's not that this is more interesting?
No, it probably is in a way.
These are both Trinity aquifer force.
You want to talk about those or?
No.
Okay.
I can't answer any questions though. Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Pillars of our water system.
Uh, so historically, we've, we've really budgeted to operations. Um, what are, we're using our revenues to man, maintain regular operations and then pay existing debt and, and, you know, trying to keep and minimize rate impacts to the citizens. It's always been on the forefront of council's mind and staff's mind and, and everyone else. Um, but we really haven't done a good job of future planning as far as putting away money in the bank to do some of these bigger projects. Rates just don't get there and I, and I'm going to show you why. Um, so really at your direction a few years back, I mean, you'll remember, we really were pushed to start prioritizing asset replacement. And we started talking about that. We were really looking at aging infrastructure, but rolling stock primarily. Well, we've talked about the last few council meetings. We've kind of taken a little bit different direction on that and tacked on to the rolling stock conversation we've had so many times. Now looking at infrastructure, what do we own, what's in the ground? Um, instead of budgeting that really from an operational standpoint as of if it breaks, we have money set aside to fix it, when do we think that this is end of useful life and when should be we, we be replacing it? So we're going to be bringing back a lot more conversation about that and just our overall modeling at the general fund and, uh, water fund regarding overall city assets, um, whether it be rolling stock or facilities or parks or maintenance or whatever that happens to be so that we can get a longer-term look at lining out those, um, asset replacements for whatever that need might be. So really these charts right here is what it's telling you is just taking a historical look at budget to actual with blue being the budget and orange being the actual, what we have transferred over to each of these funds historically. And you can see on the left, um, the asset replacement history, we've really started to emphasize that over the last few years. And we've talked about that through budget, um, and increased our budget transfer as part of our operational expense. Um, on the CIP, we've really kind of always relied on excess funds. And then we have budgeted a little bit along the way, but there hasn't really been a big emphasis on putting money back for capital projects. You know, we have debt cash on hand, we're doing projects probably at capacity as far as what we can do, um, from a staffing standpoint on projects from timing. Um, so really looking ahead, putting some money over there into CIP so that if there is a big million-dollar project, we've built that fund balance and we can do that. Um, or if we have an emergency break or those kind of things. So, uh, more to come on that, um, when we bring you some more budget information on that, on that new asset look. But really the consequence of not planning for that is we do have a lot of aging assets and y'all have seen that through Stuart's plan and I don't have to talk you through the water wastewater master plan. I'm definitely not an expert there, but the need near-term i- is there. And so the question posed to us is if we issue debt, can we pay for that and what's the impact to the rate pair? Okay?
I just want to make a quick, before we move past this, what gets lost sometimes, uh, in, in some of these explanations, you know, there can be this misnomer that the system hasn't been maintained. It's absolutely one hundred percent not true. Your staff, as we just elaborated to you, runs a very complex system. They do a great job of maintaining the system. However, it is an aging system. I mean, the reality is both of your plants are over forty years old. A lot of your infrastructure in the ground is, is even older than that. At some point, infrastructure is, just becomes at the end of its useful lifecycle and it has to be replaced. Um, what this community hasn't always done well is to save in advance for those items. Um, and you've got to think, forty years ago, yeah, it's, it's not typical to even be able to foresee what is a, what would, what would a new plant cost you forty years from now, right? There's a lot of variables that happen over those four decades. And so, um, there, that, that lifecycle component, um, is really about the discussion that we're having today. So, but I don't want anybody to walk away thinking, oh, the system's not being maintained. It one hundred percent is being maintained. Some of these are just, they're, they're ready to be replaced.
Okay, any questions on that? Okay, so moving on, um, to your next page, um, just going to kind of walk you through budgeting in general. So, uh, water modeling is difficult. Um, and Stuart, you know, talked to you about consumption and all the factors that go into it. Um, back in two thousand and nineteen, when we did the rate study, um, soon after that, we kind of restructured our model, um, just to take a look at, um, where's consumption coming from? Um, how's it broken down in tiers? Uh, how does that impact revenue and those kind of things? And so, um, we've really restructured that year-over-year. Um, we spent a lot of time on that last year. Um, and you can see on this chart with this historical water and sewer, this is combined services. I didn't have really room to break them out, not really necessary for this conversation. The lighter blue there is budget and the actual is, um, the darker blue is actual revenue at the end of each year. So you can see kind of as we've restructured that model back in two thousand and twenty, you can see the gap kind of starting to close. So I really feel like we have a better handle on how to project and what information to project. Um, the question has always been, do you predict, project consumption on an average rainfall year? But then what's average and, and, and how do you set that? And you saw kind of in Stuart's graph, the variation that can, you can have a really wet year, a really dry year. And we continue to talk about base rates and what the, what that drives as far as consistency of revenue and also consistency for a consumer from a budgeting standpoint. So, um, the base rate right now that we have is thirty percent of our overall revenue. So that is pretty consistent, but thirty percent with seventy percent being super volatile, um, you know, that, that's difficult. And so we've talked about in the past, your expenses related to operating the water system don't change, um, regardless of whether we're selling water or not. We still have to operate the system, um, and maintain the system. So, um, there's kind of a fine balance between, are we budgeting enough revenue to really take care of the system operationally? And if we fall short, then how does that look and where do those funds come from? And so that's things that we work through as we're talking through projections. Um, but you can see the closing of the gap right there. So our water model really looks at tracking consumption, but by tier. So, you know, every category, whether it's residential, commercial, irrigation, those kind of things, they all have different tier levels within your rate structure, which you know. Um, so we kind of look at them individually, primarily focusing on residential because that's where most of our water, um, goes. And then just looking at those by tiers and saying, based on this rate, with this amount of water used, this is how much revenue that's going to produce, okay? So that's the kind of detail that we have. And it's probably a, I don't know, forty tab workbook that you probably wouldn't want to look at. So I'm bringing you some stuff in summary. This little graph down on the very bottom here is just a snip of the summary level. Once all that information is brought together to kind of say, okay, this is the consumption by tier. Um, this is based on twenty-two's number, so very current. Um, this was the dollars in base charge, this was the total bill, and then this was for the volumetric piece only. So you can really kind of break out how the different pieces impact your overall revenue there. So once we kind of get to what that looks like, then we apply just variety of rates. And once we've kind of established what the revenue needs to be to be able to operate, um, and then on council direction, what are our transfers look like and what does our debt look like? Once we land on that, then we can apply a number of rate structures to the consumption that we know based on, you know, the best of our ability and then try to come up with a rate that is fair both to the consumer but also fair to our revenue sources as we need them to operate. It's important to know that ninety-seven percent of our revenues come from consumption-based charges. And so as we talk about not wanting to impact rates and, you know, no one does, anybody, no one wants to talk about any kind of increase to the consumer, we've all had increases in our own life. I mean, um, even outside of here, the city has increases on what things are costing us now compared to what they did before. Um, we don't have impact fees, um, for new development like some other cities have. So we don't have big chunks of money, um, that are coming in. Um, so we rely heavily on our consumption-based rates. The reason I say this is because as we were going through this exercise to bring you back information on impacts, um, we really turned over every rock and we said, all right, what, what revenues are coming into the water fund? Um, what all of those look like? And then when we really started saying, can we get a little more out of these non-consumption-based fees that's not hitting your user every day and what's the impact of that, um, to be able to offset any increases to fees? But the reality is, um, we have a fourteen point seven million dollar twenty-three budget and four hundred and forty-one thousand of that is other fees. So you can see that even if we're really making increases in those areas, there's not a big impact. And so we did that just to say, we've explored every opportunity, um, to find dollars that don't necessarily affect your everyday user. So, um, things that are in those other fees, um, testing and repairs. So we do a lot of tests at our lab, uh, we do repairs, um, on customer lines sometimes if they impact our streets and those kind of things. Um, it's volatile, so on those kind of fees, we really budget a low average based on historical. Some years those can be really high, just depending on the need and other years they're low. So we kind of just keep those at a low average. It's kind of just a cushion there. We really don't, that's, that's a difficult one. Um, sale and installation of meters and taps, so that's of course dependent on development. Um, so we do monitor permits that are being issued, things that are coming out in the future. We have this conversation with development services all the time when we bring you, uh, council reports on what's going on? What do you see happening? Is there a new, uh, multi-unit coming on, those kind of things? So we can start estimating, how many meters do we think we're going to need in the upcoming year? And then what does that look like to us from a revenue standpoint? The big thing to note there is meters and tabs a lot of times is primarily a pass-through expense. Um, we're not making a lot of money on those. Um, again, we don't have those impact fees that, you know, would be paid with that, uh, new tap service like other communities have. So one of the things we're really doing now and Trina's been working with our Public Works guys is to say, what does installation of a meter really cost? And let's look at the whole cost, not just the tab costs this and the pipe costs this, but what's our time cost, what's our equipment use cost and all those things? Because when you look at what our costs are compared to if someone did it commercially, it's nothing. Um, so, you know, we want to encourage development. We certainly don't want to be, you know, trying to overcharge people in any way, but we're really looking at, are we covering the cost? Um, so we're working on that right now and there's a, a lot of work actually going on in that right now. Interest and miscellaneous, it's so small, um, we just budget that, you know, very moderately based on what the economy is doing at the time. Um, we talked about benchmarking, um, we're benchmarking other cities on the fees also, uh, not just on our water rates and sewer rates for volume and base charge, but just across the board on the other fees we talked about just to see, you know, what's everyone else doing, um, in this industry? And because it's such a small piece, we've never dug into that as deeply as we are right now. Um, but we're just, we're just looking for, you know, let's don't cost us money. Let's at least make sure that we're covering the costs that we are incurring for those, those expenses. Um, Public Works is using a new software. Public Works is using a new software called Asset Essentials that came online with that last year. And it's really allowed us to have a better tool. So they're tracking work orders and every work order has the components used for whichever service they were doing all the way down to cost. It's tracking hours used, who did the work? So we can actually extrapolate an actual cost for each service and then come up with an average on, we did, you know, 100 sewer taps and on average they cost this. And that way we can really see, are we charging correctly? And maybe we're too high. Very much assure you, that's probably not the case. Because we do see the actual material costs, but there's a lot of other factors in there too. So, David and his team are really working on getting some good data on that. But again, these are small dollars in the grand scheme of things there. So, looking forward, remember when I'm talking about revenue, I'm talking about revenue, not rates. So these are two different conversations, all right? So in FY '24, a kind of our preliminary proposal is a 6% revenue increase over fiscal year '23. Okay? That sounds kind of 6%, everybody lands on percentages and percentages can be scary. But what I did was pull some historical stuff and say, what have we done in the past? So FY '23 was a 7% revenue increase over '22 and FY '22 was a 5% increase over '21. So, it's not really out of line. And I went back, all the way back to like 2016. Some of that's growth. So you have to take and, you know, keep in mind, there is a growth factor in there, although we do have moderate growth. There is some growth factor there because new accounts mean new revenue, which has increased over last year. So, where we have to get to is, what's the revenue dollar we really need? And then how do we get there in the best way? So, we're currently working on the process of applying a variety of different rates to our consumption tiers that we just talked about to see how does that look from a revenue standpoint in addition to the other things we just talked about. So we're going to be bringing back some specifics to you on that with rates by category and by tier so that you can really see, just like we did last year where we say, this is where we are now, this is what we're proposing. And not just, here's the increase, but this is the impact to every tier. And what's our average customer going to see? And I think at the end of the day, that's really what we're interested in is how are we impacting that? And then what's, what are we getting out of that? So if there's revenue increase, then what are we doing to make the system better? And I think that's kind of where we're going in general. Overall, what we really want to do is just increase, just make a more consistent budget process. And so when we talk about asset replacement and we talk about CIP, really making those things part of our budget conversation instead of their after-the-fact thoughts, well, if we have excess revenue, then we'll move it there. If we're budgeting correctly, we really shouldn't have a huge amount of excess revenue. There's going to be things that happen. It's not like in the general fund where we have extreme way sales tax just hitting it out of the park. But maybe it's not. But water isn't going to be like that. You're not going to see those huge swings like you do on the general fund because it's not as steady and there's so many variations, but your expenses are pretty set. On the general fund, you know, sometimes you'll see variations in expenses for different things because things change. But the water fund is very consistent when it, what it costs in personnel and those kinds of things, materials, supplies, maintenance to maintain that system. So, we feel good about our expense projections based on what we know today. I mean, nobody saw 9%, you know, cost of goods inflation last year. 20 plus on the water side. We didn't see that coming before it was actually here. So, to say I'm comfortable with that means right now today, I feel pretty good about what our projections are. So we have done a lot of work on this, kind of dove in really deep on the projection side. Here's some just preliminary recommendations for '24. What we're going to propose is maintaining the same budgeted asset replacement transfer, which was 500,023 and just holding the line on that for now with the idea that it will increase over time as budget allows, but that keeps being part of our budget conversation. Increasing a transfer to the CIP as part of the budget so that now we start building a little bit of reserve over there for either emergencies or build up over time so that we have money to go and drill a new well if we need to with cash reserves. So once we put it into CIP, it is restricted. So, you know, when it's in Fund II or the water fund, if it's excess at the end of the year, of course you decide at the end of the year what to do with excess funds. But if not, it just rolls into fund balance. And so, once it's moved, it's restricted to that purpose unless council gives us the direction to bring that back out for whatever reason. So, you can, you'll be able to see that balance time over time building so that we can make some decisions about, you know, what needs to happen going forward. So, operating expenses really, as we talked about, they should be relatively consistent. So what we're trying to do through this new budgeting thing that I keep talking to you about is just standardize your operational budget. You shouldn't see big spikes and big swings in operations. This is what operations is. Yes, it's going to grow over time naturally with increases on things. But what we'd like to do is put your big one-off type expenses. We're going to buy a filter that's half a million dollars every five years. You don't want to see that in your operational budget because that works against what you're trying to do with establishing a consistent revenue stream. So we want to put that over an asset replacement and say, now we have this schedule where we know in five years, we're going to need to replace this. So what are we going to do to get there to where in five years, we have the funds we need to pay for that? And not wait until it's March, we need $300,000 we didn't, you know, plan for. But we see those things over in a separate fund, we're following those, tracking those in a separate fund. So you kind of know what to expect as far as operations year-over-year with your, you know, your standard increases that you're going to see, just like everything else. So we did do benchmarking for rates and so that's what these two graphs are here. The one on the left is looking at water, the one on the right is looking at sewer. So the blue column here is base charge and the orange column is volumetric. So, the idea is just to kind of show you how different cities rely on base versus volumetric. And I know we've had this conversation since our rate study in 2019 is that, you know, there are a lot of cities. Now, these are the same cities that we used for that rate study because they're like size. This doesn't mean that their water system is the same. So, you know, we have to say that. Our system is different. We have different topography, we have different needs, we have different sources. So it's, we don't compare expense to expense. We're just looking at revenue stream and base charge compared to volumetric. So, you can see the cities that really rely heavily on the base charge. And basically what that says to me is, we know what our revenue stream needs to be and whatever we have to do on the volumetric side is what it is, but the base charge is going to take care of us. Are we there? No. When you look at, at where we sit as far as comparison to other cities, on the base charge, we're at $17.60. Average for these cities is $36. So with that being said, you have some that are on the high side there. I went ahead and took a median just to say, okay, in fairness, that average is skewed a little bit because you have some that are really high. So on the median, we're still 27.05. So we're still $10 off even what the median is on the base charge. And that would probably be okay if we were making that up on the volumetric side, but we're below on the volumetric side too. So, really on average, looking at the total water and wastewater bill, we're about 28% below the average out of our comparison cities. So, this just gives you some, some benchmark information just so that you know where we sit. We are doing our homework when we're applying these kind of future-looking forecasts as far as where do we need to go? But also, how do we compare to other cities? Are we too high? Are we too low? Say too low compared, just saying that we're way off of what the average is with a water system that is aging. And so I think that's kind of the things we've addressed through our conversation about the revenue bonds, but also about CIP and asset replacement.
Before you come off this slide, I want to talk a little bit about the comparison city piece of it. As you look through that list there, some, some, we've talked about the complexity of our system at length today. And I don't think anybody would argue that we have a very complex system both because of the nature of the supply and diversification that you all have invested in, as well as the topography that we have. A couple of the things that are interesting to think about when you think about these other communities is, where are they at in their lifecycle growth, right? Do they, do they have new plants because they're a newer community? Or are they much, much older community and so they've reinvested in those plants and so their infrastructure is newer? Where are they at from a customer base? What is their, their overall customer base? And what is the diversity of that customer base from an industrial versus a residential component? We're very heavily on the residential side of things. We're at a relatively slow growth compared to a lot of these communities, particularly the ones that do have some of those lower rates. We're at, you know, typically a 1% residential growth rate, maybe a 2% commercial growth rate. So, that certainly also affects. And then these communities, some of these communities again, do have impact fees related to some of their growth components that do go into not only their collection distribution infrastructure, but also towards some of those plant upgrade components. So, it's very, very difficult for us to get a true apples-to-apples comparison when we are comparing these. But we, we do our best to try to at least give you where we fall in the mix.
Well, and I, and I think it's, it's good to look at that, but I agree. It's just you can't do apples and apples. I think the most important thing is, what do we need to stay sustainable and be able to have this extra money that, that has not been there? And, and we're at a point where we're able to look out a little bit better into the future. We know where we are and, and we know what's coming down the road. So, that's what needs to drive our decisions.
Right.
It's a great segue.
It is. So, this is just a snip of my actual working document. So, just kind of like Stuart's and I think there was a few questions that brought up that it made me think. Just to make sure you understand, like some of the graphs he was showing you, this is actual working documents that staff use every day. So some of the notes and things like that that are in there, that's for us. And that's part of our, part of our process every day and part of us to make sure we're staying on track or that we remember what we were thinking at that given time. So, these are working documents. So this, you know, for this, for example, wasn't created other than just color coding it for you guys. But this is just my, one of my graphs. So this, this graph here is a forecast looking through 2030. And I have one that's out to about 35 or 40. How good is that data? I don't know because, you know, just like 22, what we saw, we, we don't know. But near term, you know, we feel pretty, pretty good about what we've built into this. This graph here is based on if we were to issue 11.5 million. We use that because we just got a recent update from Ann on payment structures. That changes. So, you know, I want to just keep in mind, we have capacity up to 12 and a half. We're just watching that close. So I kind of took the middle of the road and said, if we did this, then this is my comfort level. Okay? And what you'll kind of see on this is, so you can see 21 where we were actually, 22 where we were actually, 23 what was budgeted. And I will say that water and sewer revenues are right on track with budget as are expenses. So, we feel pretty solid right now on our 23 budget. This is assuming that 6% revenue increase that we talked about for '24. And then you can see tapering off over the next few years on down to 2030 at a potential, you know, 3% revenue increase. Now that, again, that's today. You know, what future staff or future council, you know, may recommend to you. This is what I'm saying based on our work. This is what makes sense to me. You can see the big guy here in 2030, that big gray spot down at the bottom there, that's debt that's falling off. When that debt falls off, if you look at the bottom at that change in net position, really that's what I'm looking at. When I'm looking at a forecast, you know about what your expenses are going to be. We know what our debt is that's existing, so that's an easy plug. So, working from the bottom up and just saying, from an expense standpoint, leaving those two transfers blank, establish what your expenses are. Then you know, what do you have left over? So what does your transfers look like at that point? Are revenues enough to support what we're asking from an expense point, from a, from a maintenance and operations standpoint? And from a future planning standpoint? Are we supporting that? And so, that's basically what this forecast is giving you. Now again, this is just a piece of my spreadsheet. There's a lot more to this, but I wanted you to at least just see, this is the mainstream things that we look at that are really important. Your expenses are going to be set. If our projections are right on increases on expenses, then we're backing into the revenues correctly. If we start seeing a downswing in what, you know, maybe prices go down, I don't know. Then we of course could adjust that in future years. And so this is kind of a living document that we work on, on a regular basis. This helps us with things like cash flow forecasting too. We know when we're going to spend money. So there's a lot of things that go into developing this. But just wanted you to take a look at what we work from and kind of what our thinking is moving forward. So again, we constantly monitor this, but the idea here is, and you can look at the two transfers and I probably should have made them a different color, but they're down at the bottom. What I did in your budget now, you basically see operating transfers out and everything's lumped into there. So we wrote this out so you can see every single operating transfer in detail so that you know when you see, you know, you have a $7 million transfer, what is that? So this tells you that in some detail. And so this is what's good exercise for us as well because we can really see when things come on, we can see when things go off and we can see where the increases are. Does that make sense?
Can you remind me what the K-Pub debt is? Is that still the payment for that bond?
No, so we, we actually, Trina, you were hitting.
Was that just when we borrowed just? Right, 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 okay.
Yes, we borrowed directly from that fund.
Okay, that's why I want to make sure.
So that's why too, that, that, that payment is so big because right now we're essentially paying principal. So we're kind of getting toward the end of paying off that loan. And typically what you'll see on debt is you see it smaller at the first because you have some interest built in there. But as that interest starts to drop off, then everything you're paying is hitting the principal. And so that's why you're seeing that.
And are we looking at that, if, if this is okay if you don't?
No, please.
Are we looking at 2020, 20, I'm sorry, 2030 being the final date that, that debt will drop off? Or is that kind of an estimate?
It will drop off at 29. No, that is a definite. 29 is our last payment. So it will drop off. So that black square there, that is a true zero. So that's why I highlighted that there. So if you look at that and then look at, based on the revenue forecast we've done, and again, that's today, what is your change in net position? So the change in net position is basically saying, this is what we have left. If all these things line up and all these things are true, then this is kind of what we have to play with, so to speak, and, and decide what does our future look like at that point? Now, of course, we need to evaluate this every year. What does growth look like? You know, maybe that changes for us. And so then we may be having a completely different conversation next year. But if we do that regularly and we're building out the future based on what is constantly changing, then we should have a pretty solid plan in place. So, you can see there though, those transfers just being consistent over time, even with the issuance of debt. I mean, it's my opinion that we should make that transfer anyway, make that be part of our budget anyway. Even though it's not going to make huge leaps and bounds. I even did the math to say, okay, if we didn't issue any debt, we keep the revenue the same, we increase our transfers, how long is it going to take us to actually build enough money to do anything with? I can't get you to 10 million for like eight years. So, what is, what does that do for us now? And what are the projects that we need to do right now? We still cannot do those. So, basically my recommendation or my, my, I guess my answer to your revenue to rates is, I would be recommending the same revenue regardless of whether we issue the debt or not. Because we have to do some things for future planning. And if we're not able to take care of the needs we have now, then those needs are going to be bigger.
Just one quick clarification before we move beyond this slide. And we, we highlighted this last time we talked with you guys, the, these recommended revenue increases of 6%, 5%, 4%. I don't want anybody to walk away thinking, okay, that, we're, we're saying rates are going up 6%, 5%, 4%. Remember, there's a lot of factors that go into that. The base rate, the volumetric rate, the different tiers that you have. And so, it would be too simplistic to walk away and say, I've got a $100 water bill, water bill, and that's going to go up by $6 next year. That's not what we're saying. And so there's a lot more that we come to you, but this is a revenue forecast that we've tried to provide for you guys that matches up with your expense forecast. Does that make sense?
I think a good point to that too is if you look at the changes we made last year, we had a 7% revenue increase budgeted for 2023. And if you really look at the impacts that we gave you in the charts and graphs to say, okay, this is where we are now and with the rate increase, this is what customers will be. I think the average was $4 and some change. But if you looked at that, and I think this is where we have to be careful clarifying when you start talking about percentages because 10% of a dollar is small, but 10% sounds scary. So when you really start thinking about what do you, what a percentage do you apply? We talk in percentages because that's the world we live in, but an average person doesn't. And so we like to really say dollars and cents. This is what it's going to cost. And so, that's the information we really want to bring to you is, at the end of the day, what's it going to cost? To the average person, what's the impact? Also keeping in mind, you know, that citizens do want the water to come on when they turn the faucet on. So there is an expense to maintaining the system, especially, you know, as diverse as it is and especially as, like EA said, as old as some of these things are getting. So, we do have to identify where it's going to be bigger later. Okay, this graph gives you a look at current debt. So this is as of today, what we have on the books. And again, you can clearly see there 2030, you can see that drop off. In 29, we make that last payment on that loan. And so, you can see a big difference there. This will exactly line up with the forecast that you see as far as what debt payments are. So these are color-coded here. The, if you look at the bottom left-hand corner, that orange square there, that's a 2008 CO that's falling off. So that's, that's what that is. That's why you only see it one time. So you guys have seen this graph quite a few times, but here's a new one. This looks a little bit different. It's not scary, but I actually think it identifies things a lot more clearly. So this graph is based on the forecast that I just showed you using a five-year forecasted revenue. So you can see it kind of flattens out. We didn't get out into the, you know, 20-year forecasting there of revenues. We just kind of flattened it. This assumes that we were to issue 11.5 million based on the payment schedule that we have today. And what this says is, everything in red down there, that's operating costs. So before we do anything else, we have to operate. So that's what the red is. The dark green is operating transfers out. So the, again, we took the transfers and broke them down here by color. So then you can take them back to the forecast that I gave you and, and tie those out. So you can see exactly where money's going. you and tie those out, so you can see exactly where money's going. The yellow is a transfer to asset replacement. The light blue is a transfer to CIP, and the dark blue is existing debt that we have on the books right now. And then that orange at the very top would be the issuance of the new revenue bonds, just so you can kind of see what's happening over time. And you can see there, you know, again, with 2029, you can start to see some space there. So that space is revenue, revenue over expenses. That's what that is. So this really helps, and it helps us internally, too, to be able to identify, at what point do you have, I guess, quote-unquote, excess funds based on the revenue that you're projecting? And then at what point do we have how many dollars of excess revenue? And then what is our plan for that? So do we plan for that during the budget? You know, do we plan for that as a CIP? What do we do with that? And I think, you know, given that we're not that far from 2029, over the next few years, we need to be talking about that, and what's that look like long-term?
Yeah. I've never seen a graph like this before.
I like it.
And I like it.
Yes. This is good.
About Katrina's graph making, so--
Thank you.
It's super clear to me. It really identifies exactly where dollars are going. So I think what we were really trying to do is simplify things to where you can look at a color and back it into the forecast and say, okay, this is what she said here. Where does that transfer to over here? So that way, you can see it's super clear. Any questions on this?
And I just want to clarify, I think probably most of you assume that, once we get, and I can't see the number on there, but once we get to about twenty--
Thirty-five.
I think that, when that levels out and that flat piece, obviously, you all know that that's not going to be flat out past there, but--
Right.
We're trying to relay to you all that we don't know what life will be like in ten to fifteen years. And so really, the more accurate is that area where it's trending up, right? But we don't even want to give you assumptions for what those long-term trends are past that.
But it's a great visual.
I thought so. And it really kind of tells a story, and as year over year, we make those changes and this graph updates and changes, then you'll be able to see not only history, but you'll be able to see a better future forecasting, I think.
Yeah.
Any questions on this graph, or really, anything before I move on?
Point two, go back one slide, Julie. I just want to remind council, you've all got your enterprise hats on right now, right? And so while many of our property taxpayers certainly are also water utility customers, not all of them are, right? We have a lot of water utility customers that aren't property tax. These are debts that are paid for via the utility system. Some of them are backed by property taxes should something catastrophic happen and we're not collecting water revenues. But the reality is, these debts are paid for through water revenue funds, not property taxes. So a lot of times, community members may look at the total debt for the city, total debt for the community. The reality is, these are paid for via that enterprise fund.
And I think that's a good point. When you're looking at the forecast and you look at the bottom at existing debt down there, where it has your debt broken out, you have existing debt, and then obviously, the K-PUB broke in there. But if you look at, for example, 2023, you can see that's about, give or take, four million dollars, plus or minus, of fifteen million. So when you really look at what our debt ratio is and how much money is really committed to debt, it's really pretty small. If you think about, you know, take that and put it on a fifty thousand dollar level and put it to what a fifty thousand dollar a year person, revenue person's debt is. And so percentage-wise, I mean, I feel very comfortable with where we are. Keep it in mind, we're below what our policy is. Not that we would exceed it anyway, but we're below what our policy is for debt at this point. Okay, so kind of just to give you a summary of what we've talked about, and then, of course, to answer any questions, some highlights here, of course, you know, we continue to be below average as far as rates. And we've talked about why that's a tough comparison to make. I mean, there's so many different reasons why different cities charge different things, but particularly on the base rate. And so from a security of a revenue standpoint, over time, you know, our recommendation would be to obviously look at the base rate first and say, you know, how do we stabilize for our revenue stream, but also how do we stabilize for the consumer what your actual cost is going to be month over month based on a certain usage? We do have a very unique water system. Y'all have seen lots of presentations from Stuart to tell you about all the different things that those of us who aren't water experts don't understand, but it takes a lot to operate our system and to understand our system. And so given that, you know, the investment in that is important. We've seen what the variety of our resources has done for us through the drought, and I think that's important that we come back to the mayor's term of sustainability. You know, how do we sustain that so that in the future, we have these situations, you know, we can just trudge through where other people can't? Our near-term capital needs, about fifteen million dollars. That was just based on our latest master plan. We know revenues can't support that. We could never raise rates enough to say, we need to go out and do ten million dollars worth of projects, so we're going to raise rates. And then also, you know, there's the factor of, why do you front cash fund something that has a thirty-year useful life instead of spreading that out to where every user of that system is helping pay for that? So, you know, there's that piece of it to think about, too. But it is important that we grow revenues over time so that we can build some of those fund balances to be able to be better, more proactive with, you know, replacement of things, especially at the plant, both plants, really, as they start aging. Expenses or projections at this point, we know, or, you know, or hope, is that June of twenty-two inflation peaked at nine point one. When I looked yesterday, February's down to six, so that's a drop from six-three that I reported to you, I think, from the end of January. So is that trending down? I mean, it's kind of flat, so it's hard to say. Is that big enough to say that inflation is on the downswing? I don't know. A lot of it will depend, you know, on the Fed. So some things to consider there. Again, the significant change in net position in 2030 is something we need to be thinking about from a long-term planning. And then, you know, that we really, at this point, and the reason I showed you eleven point five million is that's really where my comfort level is right now. That could change if Ann, you know, comes back and interest rates are lower, or interest rates are higher. You know, I could come back and say, hmm, it's a little higher than we thought. I'm really thinking, you know, ten point five makes more sense. Or at this point, that's where my comfort level is, and so the forecast that I gave you was also based on that. So the debt payments there align with eleven point five. And the reason I gave you just that one is because it would be a lot of information to kind of break out. This is what ten-five looks like, and this is what twelve-five looks like. That's where my comfort level is as far as when we pay the bills, that's where I'm comfortable. So that's why I gave you that information. So, whoa, did something wrong. Okay. So next steps, I know I give you this stuff all the time, but I just want you to kind of know what's coming, where we are, what we've done to this point. So again, you know, the resolution that kind of said, go forward, do the debt work, tell us what that looks like. We had our S&amp;P call last week. Tomorrow, we will receive our ratings, so we'll know that will have an impact on our rates. So we'll have more information tomorrow, once we find that out. We're working on a due diligence questionnaire right now that's basically answering questions for underwriters. It kind of speaks to our creditworthiness, what our risk is, and those kind of things for people who were potentially going to invest in these bonds. So that's the information that they're, that's what we're working on right now. The April third, it will go to Ideal, which is that website we talked about last time when we did public safety facility, same thing. We put it out there for bids. And so that's where people can go out and say, this is what we're willing to pay, and this is how much of the piece of the bond we would like to buy. So there's a process that goes on there. And all goes well. April eleventh, we would come back to you with an ordinance that says, this is where, you know, where we feel at this level, this is what the pricing is, and ask for authorization to then actually sell those bonds. And then May eleventh was when we would actually receive cash in the bank, and so Stuart and his team could go forward with doing what they need to do.
We'll see the ratings tomorrow. When will we know the rating?
I can send it out to you tomorrow if I find out. Happy to do that.
I'd like to know.
Yep.
I don't think it's going to be anticipate, I don't anticipate it's going to be much different than the last.
No. And so a rating for revenue bonds is a little bit different than a rating for general fund, but it's not substantially different. But S&amp;P looks at it a little bit different. So when we were working through the questionnaires for S&amp;P, the questions were way different than they were for revenue, I mean, for general fund, where they're looking at growth and property tax and those kind of things. Over here, they're looking at system sustainability, what is your revenues over time, you know, what is our current debt, those kind of things. So it's a little bit different. A lot of questions about the water system, actually detailed questions about water system and what we're doing to maintain it and those kind of things. So it's a little bit different call than I've experienced before, and the rating is different. So, but we will know tomorrow at some point. They assured us on the call last week, we would know by the twenty-second.
We'll get that information to you guys this week.
Awesome. Yep.
Thank you.
Good stuff.
Yes.
Thank you. And I just, I don't, there's no doubt, we have a responsibility to look to the future. And we've got to, we've got to do that. And yes, it does mean maybe a little more money out of everybody's pocket, but again, when we have water available, and I mean, just the fact that we've got it and we're only in stage one, in my book, these things are just all support our moving ahead.
Well, if there's anything, you know, y'all would like to discuss budget-wise or have questions about forecasting or anything, just reach out to me and we can, we can sit down and go through that. Okay?
Thank you.
She's sincere about that. I had a tutoring session last week.
Hey, we've got one, just last quick item.
One last one.
We did, we did tell you last time, as we were coming out of the audit process, this is our normal time of year that we come back in and do essentially a budget cleanup, a budget amendment that does some cleanup from our year-end closeout that comes after the audit process because we need all those financial documents to line up with that. And so we wanted to just provide the workshop for you guys in case you had any questions on that, because you will see that on your subsequent regular city council meetings coming up.
So very simple, actually, this time. Just a few things that we need to just clean up, leftover from fiscal year twenty-two. On the general fund, it's really just one thing, and that is unspent streets dollars. So as you know, the last several years, what we've done with anything, if there was a timing issue, we're in the middle of paving. If you think about timing of paving, we're ending the year about that time. So it's not uncommon for us to have some dollars that we didn't spend for a project that's already in progress. So what we've done in the past is just swept that money over to CIP that is reserved for streets maintenance, and that way, we're saying, council allocated X dollars for street maintenance, and that is the only place it can be used. So simply, it's just transferring that four hundred thousand of the two point two million that we didn't spend in twenty-two over to that so that it's restricted. And that way, it doesn't roll into fund balance. That's what we're doing there. On the water fund, we had excess revenue, about five hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. Remember that a hundred and eighty-six thousand of that is that carbon that we keep talking about at the water plant. So that came in twenty-three, but was budgeted in twenty-two. So we'll need to increase that water system maintenance account to account for that. So that way, they're not really out of balance on their budget for twenty-three. And then my recommendation would be to take a portion of the rest of the surplus, three hundred and twenty-five thousand, and move it to asset replacement. That would leave, give or take, twenty-something thousand. I believe in fund balance. And just let that roll. So that's all on those two funds. Asset replacement, the reason we want to do this is just really for budget cleanup. Asset replacement rumor does not have to be balanced, and it has a lot of changes, and there's a lot of activity that happens year over year. But given supply problems that we had last year, we thought it was important to go ahead and say, let's clean up the twenty-three budget so that when we show you twenty-three actuals, you can see that there was actually money budgeted in those line items where the expenses actually occurred, because they should have occurred in twenty-two, but they didn't. So, for example, we bought a streets paver that was budgeted in twenty-twenty-two, four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So we paid for that in twenty-three. So we just need to move the expense from twenty-two to twenty-three. Same thing on vehicles. So we had an ambulance that was budgeted in twenty-two. It wasn't received. It's still not received. That budget amount for twenty-two was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I can tell you, it is not going to cost two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's going to be more. But what we'd like to do is just move the amount that we originally budgeted, and then we can talk about, you know, what we have talked about. We've brought those to council already for approval with, you know, they're pushing three hundred thousand at this point.
Do we have an idea of when that ambulance is going to get here?
We actually got a VIN number for a chassis, so that's good. So, no, but we know that it's closer than it was a month ago, because we've actually been assigned a VIN number. We know there's one out there being built for us, so I don't know. I don't know. But I know that we have two budgets--
This year?
We hope. We have one budget in twenty-two, one budget in twenty-three. Neither of them are moving at this point, so.
And it's the whole industry, and that's part of the issue. It's just everything. All of them are backlogged. And you'll see, that's really the trend we're talking about, whether it's filters for water, or whether it's ambulances for fire. It's just, you know, we got caught in a multi-year pandemic issued backup, and so this is kind of cleanup for all those functional areas.
Right. And the only other one, we bought three police vehicles last year, and we actually paid for them last year. They were built and sent to the safety company who does all the upfitting for us, but we don't have them from there yet. So the vehicle part was paid for in twenty-two, but we still have about sixty thousand dollars that we haven't paid for on those three vehicles for upfitting that will hit us in twenty-three. So really, this is just a cleanup. There's nothing out of the ordinary or magical about it. It's just really to better align so that when we present twenty-three financials, it makes more sense. So that's what you'll see in your ordinance. I'm going to come out in the packet along with these attachments. There's also a fee component that's coming from Engineering Development Services that, A, one fee is for clarification. It's already in there and being charged, but it was just clarifying the language of the fee, and that was a piece of a right-of-way fee that's for flat work that really needs to be titled driveway, driveway and flat work. I can't remember how we titled it. And then the other one is the addition of an actual right-of-way fee, as I think you guys talked about last week, and then the mailbox fee. So those are just additions, and because we approved the fee schedule as part of the budget, then we're just including them with the budget amendment, so we're amending the entire document as one. So you'll see those as attachment B in your packet on Friday.
All the fees are attachment B?
Yes. And it's three, there's three fees. Keep in mind, one isn't new. It was just a clarification of the language, and then the other two are the ones that you guys just talked about in the meeting. Any questions for anything from me?
Do you have any of the fees numbers on hand?
Um, yes.
Were those finalized yet?
In my mind, yes. So the right-of-way fee was put in at three hundred, and then the mailbox fee was put in at a standard permit, I believe, at thirty dollars. So whatever our standard building permit was with no extras is what they plugged for the mailbox fee. And the other one is a hundred and fifty dollar fee that is already in the book. It's just that the driveway wasn't titled in there, and so it was just a language cleanup on[1733.23]